I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every entity in heaven.
Our first item of business is to approve the agenda. The recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion?
Scott will make the motion.
Charles will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. You know what? We'll go ahead and, Miriam, I'll take yours by roll call. She's a yes? I mean, can you enter that?
Oh, I got it.
Okay, okay. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is public comments. We do have a public comment speaker tonight. The Board of Education welcomes comments about issues being addressed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in the order in which they have signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. If you have materials you would like to share, please place them on the tray on the podium and they will be distributed to Board members following the meeting. Our first public speaker is Karen Parnell. Good evening, Karen.
Hello. I do have some handouts. So where's the tray? Okay, hello. My name is Karen Parnell. I am a world language teacher at Glendale High School. I've been in front of you all before, so it's nice to see you again. I'm here today on behalf of Springfield Public Schools' world language teachers. I'm here to advocate for the expansion of elementary language programs and the reinstatement of our middle school language programs. The mission of Springfield Public Schools is to prepare all students for tomorrow by providing engaging, relevant, and personalized educational experiences today. World languages play a key role in carrying out this mission. People are connected with one another more than ever before due to our expanding global society. Over the past decade, SPS has lost several middle school world language programs. In 2016, all nine middle schools in the district offered a seated world language course to their students. Today, four SPS middle schools offer world languages. The number of SPS middle school students learning a new language has also dropped by nearly half in the last decade. At their peak in 2012, some 1,840 middle school students, I'll say that again, 1,840, 1,840 students enrolled in SPS world language courses. In 2021, that number stands at 959. Loss of middle school programs has also had an impact on our high school language programs, which have seen a 25% decrease in enrollment. This is due to a number of factors: launch, retirements, academies at the high school level. This is of grave concern to us. The drop in world language enrollment since 2012 directly correlates with the loss of teaching positions in our programs. In 2012, Springfield Public Schools had 42 language teachers on the roster. Today, that number stands at 28. We have lost 14 teachers in nine years. And this is directly related to the removal of the program at the middle school level. With the loss of programs comes the loss of opportunity. Considering the college and career readiness of our students, we must acknowledge the importance of world languages in preparing them for the future. Springfield Public Schools does not have a world language requirement for graduation. Yet 14 Missouri universities require or recommend a minimum of two years of language study for admission. If we do not encourage our students to study a world language in high school, we limit their chance of being admitted into the Missouri College of their choice.
Karen, I'm gonna have to stop you. Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your tolerant consideration.
Appreciate it. Our next public speaker is Robert Boydstrun. Okay, our next public speaker is Christina Boydstrun. Okay, that concludes our registered public speaker, so we will move on with our agenda. Our next agenda item is to hear from our Foundation of Springfield Public Schools update. And I believe that brings Natalie Murdock, the Executive Director of the Foundation, to give us her annual update to the Board. Good evening, welcome Natalie.
Thank you, thanks for having me. So Grant Day was amazing.
Yes.
I want to thank all of our donors and our volunteers. I want to thank our staff, Tina Fan, who's our Development Director who came today, who spearheaded our fundraising for this campaign and works tirelessly every day to service our students. I'm gonna go through the numbers with you first. We awarded $195,600 to support 47 different sites in seven categories: classroom project, literacy, STEAM, diversity, equity, and inclusion, mental health, community and family engagement, and student experience. So needless to say, Grant Day is one of our favorite, favorite days of the year, and it's our favorite way to kick off a great school year. We are super excited to see these projects come to life over the next few months. I want to thank you all as a Board and Dr. Lathan and her staff. It truly is a team effort, what we do, and we are so grateful to be a part of this team. I will say this was a really tough year because all the grants were really good. And it's probably the first year that we really didn't have any that fell low. And so that's hard for our volunteers to allocate dollars and try to decide whose grants get funded. So we plan to fund more. Tina never stops fundraising. So as we get more money in, we will probably be funding a few more of those grants on the list. But we do want to do a check presentation to you all, since some of you were able to join us, and we like to just get our use out of this. If you all as a Board want to come up and join us.
Yeah, we'll all come up and take our picture. Everybody.
I just volunteered him for that.
It'd be great if you all would stand in the middle and then we'll get that back. Sounds great.
We'll go second.
Yeah, that sounds good. I think we can squeeze just a little bit more to the side, that'd be great. Okay, that's perfect. That's perfect. One, kind of three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for all that you all do. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
How many schools?
Forty-seven different sites. So every school that submitted a grant got at least one grant funded. There were a few schools that didn't submit grants, which is totally okay.
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you guys do. I know the Foundation doesn't just hand out grants once a year. You also do scholarships and classroom projects and all this other stuff that supports our teachers and our staff and our students. So thank you for everything you do.
That's right, that's right. What's next? Tell us what you need. What's next?
Well, we just picked off our employee campaign with the awesome employees of SPS. So all month long, we'll be raising money from SPS employees. We still have our Pick-A-Project crowdfunding platform, so that is there. And we are, you know, always encouraging staff to submit those requests on that platform. So it's just like any other crowdfunding platform, provides all the tools, the bells and whistles that donors choose or GoFundMe provides, and we don't charge any fees. So that's really the upside to using the Foundation's platform is that they get all of what they raise. So that's a really great thing. So that's a great resource for teachers. And of course, the teachers that don't get their grant funded, we share that information with them as well. So now we're really excited to see some of these projects come to life. There was some just super cool stuff, so hopefully you'll get to join in some of those grant visits later on in the year to see those projects in action.
Well, we saw the teachers and principals on social media. They were just elated to be receiving those grants. So thank you for making their wishes come true for our kids. And please send thank you to your staff and your Board, from our Board, for all their work that goes into that.
Absolutely, thank you guys.
All right, thank you Natalie. We have our annual update from our Springfield area PTA. Is that person here? Okay, all right, Sarah. Great. Yes, that's great.
I'm gonna pre-apologize for, I am not a public speaker. My occupation is a nurse and I'm the PTA president. I didn't do a lot of public speaking.
Yep, you're fine. This is Sarah Witten.
Yes, my name is Sarah Witten. I am a Springfield graduate. My husband is also a Springfield graduate, and we have two boys in Springfield as well and have been very happy with everything that you guys have done. And I just want to thank you guys for everything that you do, because you do the hard work. PTAs get to do the fun stuff in schools with the kids. So thank you for what you do that allows us to do what we can do. So I wrote up a little something so that I can kind of tell you guys what we're doing and also what we have done in the past.
That's great. Just us, yes. People everywhere.
Okay. So thank you again for giving us some time to share about our SCPTA and what we're working on. Springfield Council of PTAs is beginning our 108th year of consecutive service and advocacy for children and for public education in Springfield. We are strongly connected to our parent organizations, Missouri PTA and National PTA, in their programs, resources, and collective voices through legislative advocacy, that word?
That's okay, yep.
At the state and federal level. We were recently recognized for outstanding advocacy and communication efforts by Missouri PTA at their annual convention just last week.
Nice.
One of our Board members is now the State PTA's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Chair, and one of our Board members currently serves as the Committee Member for the National PTA Board. We are also selected to present a workshop at the National PTA Annual Convention highlighting the success of our use of technology in running our PTA Council and for the success of our April 2021 School Board Candidate Forum, which I recognize some of your faces. Our stated goals are to provide leadership development for local PTA and PTSA units and council board members. Our second is to serve as a resource for education, parenting information, and legislative issues. Our third is to encourage parent and public involvement in the Springfield Public Schools. We are looking forward to getting back into schools with our PTA PTSAs. It's hard to imagine that we're coming up on our third year that has been affected by COVID. With the uncertainty around the COVID-19 Delta variant, Springfield Council of PTA's leadership decided that we're gonna make a rolling 90-day plan and remain focused on the things that we know we can do well. A lot of them are outside of the schools. As we begin the new school year, we are committed to supporting our students, families, teachers, and staff in every way that we can safely. But we're looking forward to our time when we can get back in the schools and do a lot more face-to-face, hands-on stuff. Our council began helping students in the 1930s with the clothing drives, and then in the mid-'70s, we took responsibility for a year-round clothing bank. The PTA Clothing Bank remains open every other week. We are proud of the efforts of our volunteers who have been tireless and courageous in serving students even at the height of the pandemic. We are currently looking for ways to better accommodate the new three-tiered school schedules so that all students within need for clothes or anything have the opportunity to use this resource while being respectful to our volunteers with our school-age children and making their sports and things. We continue to have representation on the School Crossing Protection Committee with the city and county officials. This is a committee that started in the 1970s. Some of you all will know it as SGF Yields and the Mr. Walker Program. Our Reflections Cultural Arts Program is up and running and training will start happening soon with that. And we will continue to advocate for every child at the local, state, and national level. And we are very active in our advocacy and legislation. We are proud of the role of our PTA and PTSAs throughout the district to continue to play to support our schools with items such as teacher grants, teacher and staff appreciation, spirit wear, yearbooks, library books, field trips, enrichment programs for students, and community-based building family events throughout the year as safely as possible. Given the COVID-19 restrictions, we've seen a lot of our local units pivot and make adjustments, and we appreciate how they face the challenge of peeking outside the building is our key word. But again, we're looking forward to getting back into the schools when it's safe. The council provides many communication tools to help everyone stay informed with what we're doing and what is happening within the district as well, as with Missouri PTA and with the National PTA programs. We provide information and training through our newsletter, website, and Facebook. We also keep our members informed about the legislative issues that affect our children that we need their help on and their education with timely responded emails. I wanted to reach out to you guys and let you know that our council meetings will be held monthly on the first Wednesday of the month during the school year. As I refer back to the first 90 days, we're planning to hold all of these meetings via Zoom at 10:00 a.m. We hope to be back in the buildings later sometime in the school year. We are here to answer your questions and help you. So please feel welcome to attend our monthly meetings, come volunteer at the Clothing Bank, and get to know us, because we want to be here for you as well as for our students and for our local PTA units. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Yeah, any questions for Sarah at this time? Yeah, Scott.
How did we get an invite to the meeting?
I will personally invite you. I'll send you a Zoom link for that.
It'd be great. I had the link to the Zoom, that would be awesome.
Yes.
And yes, if you can send that to our Board Secretary, yeah, and then that way she can send it out so we can all get that Zoom link, that would be great.
Yes, thank you.
And I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow, yes. Awesome.
I have a question about the, I try to kind of keep up on the Clothing Bank and what's going on there. So I know that there was an appeal at one point, I don't know if it's December or whatever, that there was a real need for a lot of different clothing. So how's that going in terms of where they?
What's amazing about the Clothing Bank is, because we, I mean, I'm there weekly, and we find that we need boys' pants size six. And we're like, oh, we have nothing on our rocks. And our community miraculously, every time, will just, you know, think, oh, we're gonna have to go buy some clothes, we're gonna have to go raid a Walmart, which we do often. So if you ever see just one whole size of something out of the store, it's probably because of your PTA Clothing Bank and we just went and raided it. But more times than not, our community has been amazing, and it's just how things work out. And if you ever want to see how you can make a difference, and you see it just the same day that you volunteer, come and hang out with us at the Clothing Bank. Because the kids and the families that are there, and just seeing those kids' faces, we have the Qualins that, you know, pass out brand-new shoes. And these aren't just, you know, these are really cool Nike shoes and a whole bunch of stuff like that. And they just, it's really, you know, it's selfishly rewarding, you know, when you feel a little empty in your tank. Come hang out with us. We're a fun group of people. Really are. We're fun to hang out with. And so that is where our main focus is right now. But for anybody, if you ever have any donations, because I know sometimes in community it's, you know, hard, you don't, we're not really allowed into the schools and stuff like that, but the company, The Wash House, which is a laundromat service, I know they have one downtown, and I know we have one off of Hayden Chipotle on Campbell and Walnut Lawn. You just drop off bags of clothes, and we come pick it up weekly and take it, or you can also send it to your schools, and General Services will deliver it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I'd love to know which of, first of all, thank you. Thank you for your overview and your report. And the PTA, our Council of PTAs are an incredible arm to support our parents and our teachers, and so it's been critical for many years. And so please thank your volunteers. I was just curious, did you mention that someone was serving as the Missouri rep for those two, one position in the national position? Can you share who was doing that?
Yeah, we have, Toy Allen is serving as the Missouri Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Chair. And she just gave a wonderful report, and she's been making slides and videos and things like that. And so she is for the Missouri PTA. And then our Legislative Chair, Donna Pettiford, which I'm sure everybody knows her.
Everybody knows Donna Pettiford.
I call her my PTA mom. She's my leader. And she is working on the national level.
Okay.
That School Board Forum that we held was Zoom, and then we posted on Facebook, had so many views on it that her and I gave a, it was kind of a funny little technology skill at the national convention level, so.
Very good.
Those are our representatives.
Very good, thank you for sharing that. Well, thank you, Sarah, and thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you, I'm gonna run to another PTA meeting.
That's right, that's right. Our next agenda item is our preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders, and that brings Dr. Mulford to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Those are two exciting topics to follow.
Yes.
Now we get to talk about contracts and paying bills.
That's right.
So not near as exciting, but in your packet are the preliminary contracts and purchase orders. Some, we did get some questions prior to the board meeting, hopefully we got those answered, but at this time, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Okay. Any questions? I know Miriam had maybe wanted to hear a little bit more about an item for us to hear about, so if you want to ask about that item, this would be the time.
Can you, I'm looking at, and it's the item on the CACOB contracts 15 to 4999, you know, that one? The second one down, it's called Power School Group LLC. It's, the district will enter a three-year agreement with Power School for, I don't know how to say this, Naviance?
Naviance.
College Readiness Software. And so I'm looking at this, and it says that it's a sole-source purchase, one-of-a-kind, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, it looks really, it's very seductive, but I want you to know where I'm coming from. I'm looking at it from a monetary, you know, trying to be more responsible, because I know we have a lot of infrastructure issues and that we have to set our resources. Can you explain to me how this, we have something similar to this before, and what is this replacing or if not, sort of added value we're getting for that price tag?
Sure. So do keep in mind, it's a three-year, and this costs also is some of the upfront implementation costs, PD costs, all that, that is always front-loaded when you do something like this. So that said, no, we have not had this in the past. Also, I believe we budgeted extra dollars towards to cover this. So that's kind of, it's basically gonna cover this first three years. It gives us three years to assess it, see if it's doing what we want it to do, and then extend it at that point in time. Naviance is a widely recognized leader when it comes to this particular software. You'll notice that the description says they are a sole-source provider. The reason that is, is because they have some proprietary software and some copyrighted software that no other vendor has access to. So they're able to do, their software is able to do some things that others cannot. Also, when it comes to the university level, I don't know if you guys are familiar or not, but they, there's a component that links to the universities that, again, is proprietary, that many of the universities across the country utilize. So there's a lot of benefits to Naviance. Dr. Lathan has used it previously. I've used it in both districts I've been at previously. We, I actually have one out and bid it, and no one even comes close to what they can offer. So that's why it's identified as a sole source. But what it really does is what we've all been talking about for years, which is get the kids early, sixth grade, help them explore themselves. It's personality assessments, strengths and questions assessments, the same one that you all did, is one of many that they do in the process, career exploration, identifying paths for after-high school. So our speaker earlier spoke about foreign language and requirements, okay? So when a student develops a four-year plan for high school, within that, they will also go in and select universities they're interested in, okay? When they select those universities, it pre-populates a required course of study in high school to be eligible for admission into those universities. Parents also have access to their child's account, right? So if I have a child who's taking these assessments and completing these tasks, I can actually log in, there's an app available, you can also look at my laptop, and I can see the progress they're making. I can see their personality assessments, I can see what their strengths are. I can see what courses they're gonna be required to take through high school as they progress through high school. I can see what they've met, what they haven't met. There's, the Common Application is embedded in that. Most universities, even the ones that don't use Common Applications, students can apply through Naviance. ACT score, SAT score, all that is pulled into a one-stop shop where parents can find it easily, really accessible. College essays, we're still working through exactly how it's gonna be embedded into our programming, but I've seen it done a couple ways, where it's embedded into existing courses like high school English classes, since they're writing essays for college anyhow. And I've also seen it as a standalone course of self and career exploration that middle schoolers and sometimes freshmen are required to take. So there's a lot of possibilities. We're still in the early design stage of how we're gonna use it, but that's a real broad what it is. But then the reason it's sole source is because there's no product out there that is so comprehensive. I did make copies, because Miriam did email earlier, so thank you for that. So it allowed me to make copies of the sole-source letter, and I'm gonna hand that out. And it basically just will appoints the things that they provide that others do not. And I highlighted some, what did I say, key things that we know will be important to our students and our parents. I'll walk around right now. Hopefully, I didn't ramble too much there.
No, and you know, I have a couple questions, because, you know, I learned something at Open House, if you don't mind. So is the personality test part similar to, you told me about this, I didn't know what this was. It's called Do What You Are, and it's a discover the perfect career for you through the secrets of personality type. You know, this is, you know, an older, but you go on, it's called humanmetrics.com, then you take a personality test, and then you look at this book. Is that what the personality, is that like a, you know, a technology version of this book that's been around a while?
So there are multiple personality assessments within there. And the thing I would really drive home here is, we are not gonna use everything that is in Naviance, right? So we're gonna pick and choose the things that we think our kids will benefit from. I have no doubt that we're gonna do the strengths assessment, right? And so that will be embedded in some capacity. So Dr. Hold and her curriculum team will actually go through and identify the components that we're gonna pull into the school setting. So that particular assessment, I'm not familiar with.
Is the, which one of these? Is the, which one of these components that you were just describing, especially the part where you said it moves it to the university, which one is it unique to this and the competitors or the alternatives don't provide?
Yeah. So if you look at this list, it kind of runs back, all those bullet points are things that their program does that comprehensively, other programs do not do. There may be bits and pieces that comprehensively, they do not do. And so, you know, to say, some of the things that are probably most important to me that it does, may not be as important to Dr. Lathan or Dr. Holt, but collectively, this is the total package that we get from it.
And so these highlighted ones are the ones that the competitors don't provide?
The ones I highlighted are kind of the standout conversations that we've been having.
That you've been having.
Right.
As I look over this, I think though, directly, through their primary clearing software to the national student clearinghouse is pretty significant. And as a first-generation college student myself, I'm trying to imagine all of the things that I didn't know, that I didn't know, that at least I would know that I didn't know, right? Through this and the resources that would be available to somebody who's in my position a long time ago.
And if every sixth and 12th grade student I did it, that's how we level the plans there?
Yes.
For all students, all students.
And starting early is good. I mean, rather than starting when you're sophomore, junior year of high school, right? You start in sixth grade.
And I would point out that first highlighted bullet as well. So it provides a way to do electronic transcript delivery in that one-stop shop. I think that's a huge benefit.
What stands out to me is it, there's test prep, ACT, SAT, AP test prep. And, I mean, this says, if used regularly, it will lead to a 16% average score improvement. And I assume that test prep is then provided to our students at no cost for some students who may not be able to afford to go to a private test prep.
That's correct. So it's all built in. And keep in mind, we were having this conversation the other day around ACT prep. And you could easily spend this same amount of money giving all of your high school students access to test prep. So this is a built-in component, one more added benefit, yeah.
What also stands out for me is that as working with kids in the community, who may get these resources at the school, but it's another opportunity for those of us who work with kids from the community to also access these resources to give them multiple opportunities to address these things, you know? So I think it's just layers of opportunity.
And so, SPS University, this is exactly what would be presented to our community partners, our parents, so that, like you said, everyone working with our students outside of the school also know about the access. I did also introduce it two weeks ago to Good Morning Springfield.
Springfield.
Good Community. The Good Community group, and some of the college presidents were there and very much, were very well aware of its program.
So, long story short on this, are there other software programs that do some of these things? Yes. Is there any that do all these things? No. And so we feel like it's a great opportunity while we have the funds, let's go with the Cadillac and let's see how it works for the next three years and then determine if that's something we are willing to invest in as a district.
So the course line says college career. Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
No, that's a great, go ahead.
Go ahead, Scott. Go ahead. You return, go ahead.
He had his pencil out.
He had his pencil out.
So we, this is a great, it looks like a great program. So what's the follow-up after they take their strength assessment? Is it the counselors meeting up with them? I know the parents have access to it, which is great.
So that's where we're going to develop alongside our principals, who will be getting a lot of this information next week, okay? How it will be embedded into the curriculum. So kind of going back to, typical way it's done is it's embedded into an existing course or advisory program or something along those lines. But it could even turn into a required actual course that students take and then follow up. So I'll give an example, the first district I was at, we embedded it into all of our English classes. And there was a four-year plan, we only did it at high school, but there was a four-year plan, kind of a schedule of things that had to be completed throughout the year, and each English teacher was responsible for ensuring the students completed those tasks at that time. And the reason we did English is because of the essay component and going out college applications and those kinds of things.
I can say that I've been working with NAACPU in Springfield for many years, and oftentimes, we're trying to find opportunities for them to take these test prep programs. And we're paying for all these individual programs for these students to take. This seems like a great opportunity to drive them all to one direction in order to be able to take these, utilize these resources, even if they didn't have a class that was using it.
I agree. And it might be something after three years of data that we might have some community partners want to invest in and help.
Absolutely.
Mary, did you have any questions?
Yes, it says college, career, and life readiness. So if somebody doesn't want to go to college and they want to join the labor market, does the personality test sort of help them?
Absolutely.
Year toward, okay, so it's not just college?
Correct.
Career, college and career. I just want to make sure.
That's one of the things we really like about it, is it's really focused on helping each kid find out what they're passionate about and then helping prepare those next steps, whatever that is. And so if they're passionate about a trade that doesn't require college, then that information comes out through.
It does come out in the personality. Okay. And then lastly, since, so you have some experience with this, which is great. So now, I don't have any experience, I just Google. And a few things came up, and there was a couple, I don't even know where Montgomery is, but Montgomery was in there. I don't know what state that's in, but there was, I guess, a big data breach and blah, blah, blah. So I, can I assume that they cleaned that up and they tightened? What do you know about?
Yeah, so there's, the contract actually has data security language, same language we require of any vendor that we work.
Does it like involve teacher data? I mean, I just quickly scanned it.
Right, right. So, you know, any, again, any software company, you run the risk of a data breach on their end. It could also be on our end, right? So the only thing we can do is make sure we have the process lined out in the contract and then hold the vendor accountable. So Bruce Douglas, our IT director, has already worked through those expectations, and that is embedded in the contract, what we expect.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have more questions?
Yeah.
Okay. I hope I'm not bugging you here, but the last bullet that's highlighted, this says, my local friendly student family portal can be customized for grade six to 12 alumni and parent. What do you mean by alumni? Can they go access it then?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Dr. Lathan may know that better than me, but I do believe, once they graduate, they still have access to their information.
We did, but we didn't push it, like I said, in my previous district either. We did not push that component. We really were focused on meeting the needs of the students. But there are other components, like you said, that we don't buy, you don't get, use everything.
But you could. I'm sure how some students go to college and they don't know what they want to do.
Right, and they change.
They still have their major and they don't, they can still come back.
And so we can look into that, because we wanted to, because it starts, just start with getting all of our students acclimated to it. So it would be, think about, I guess, this next year, so those 12 graders next year, then we could start the alumni focus. So it would be.
So that cost would cover all these bullets?
That's my understanding, yes.
That's a full access. This cost is full access to all the features.
Cadillac. Okay, all right. Any other questions for Dr. Mulford?
Thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
I have a personal.
We all, when Grenita and I found out that we both had Naviance, we probably talked for two hours. I mean, it is super cool. It is. And I think we're going to be very pleased with it.
Well, can we get feedback next year or a year after it's implemented? I guess two years or, because it's going to be implemented next year, right?
It'll be implemented next year. We start the training.
Next year.
Throughout this two years. So this is a call-out planning year, and then start implementation, and then we will be providing.
Okay, all right. Good questions. Thank you, Dr. Mulford. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is our board policy. This is not for vote tonight, but for review. And Dr. Lathan, do you want to tee this up for us?
Yes, I'd like to just say thank you. I had a teacher that contacted me from Glendale High School, and then also most of the parents contacted Miriam as it relates to our foreign exchange students previously not being allowed to participate in graduation. So they brought that to our attention. And so Dr. Nicole, Dr. Nicole, Dr. Holt and I and her team, we looked into it, and we also checked with other school districts, if I'm not mistaken, we checked with North Kansas City District and a couple other school districts in the state, just to see what they were doing. In my previous experience in other school districts across the country, foreign exchange students did participate. It's just, you know, it's a ceremony. And so this is a recommendation asking the board to allow us to change that so that they can participate next spring in our graduations.
And as a grammar nerd, I actually think moving the word "only" made my heart very happy. Because grammatically, it was not good to start, and now it's better.
Thank you so much.
It's all in the words.
That's right. Thank you for giving us the context on that, and thank you for bringing that to the board so that the board can review that. And we have, any feedback on that wording before we vote on it next week, please send that to Dr. Lathan tonight, and we will...
What says my correction? The my, is that you just in teacher's form or reading?
Let me see, let me get to it. I'm sorry.
This reference copy shows a revision requested by the district and my correction. Is that you?
Okay, let me see what I see. What do you see there?
It's like the very first sentence.
Underboard doc?
I want to see who's the grammar problem.
You open up the document that's going to be changed. On page one, it says explanation, graduation.
Like reference copy.
That's what she's asking. It says the reference copy shows a version requested by the district and my correction. She wants to know who my is.
She answered.
Oh, she did? Okay, okay.
Okay, Tammy said the answer to that question is Kathy Fox from MSBA.
Membership at work.
Yes.
That's right. Because they review all of these policies before they come to us. Yes.
MSBA. They review all of them.
No, that's a good que, that's a good question. We have an internal review process. MSBA looks at it, our attorney looks at it before it even comes back to us. Yep. Okay. All right, great. We will move on to our next agenda item. We'll vote on the board policy at our regular scheduled meeting. Our next item of business, under new business, is our internal audit report, HR. And Dr. Mulford will come to the podium to introduce Angela. And just as a reminder, our board, we have already met with Angela and the BKD team last month and have had time to review the document thoroughly and to ask our questions. So this is just a public moment.
All right. So as you know, each year, we have an internal audit focus. We use BKD to do that. And the most recent focus was our HR department. Last meeting, Angela came and had some dialogue with you all there enclosed. So we're going to do the public presentation tonight. And then do expect an email very soon with the survey for future topics. I think everyone's had their individual meeting, and so that survey will come out and then we'll kind of choose our next focus area. So Angela Morlock with BKD. Angela?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for joining us.
So just here to formally submit the final internal audit report related to human resources. As you are all aware, there are a number of findings contained in this report and some pretty sweeping recommendations that we have made. And I know administration is working on putting together a plan to address the most significant of the observations that are contained in this report. And so you should probably be expecting to see a plan, you know, before too awful long. But I will be sending out the remaining risk assessment surveys, and then I will be back at a meeting so we can set our internal audit plan for the current year.
Right.
Any, anything else I can do for you this evening?
I think you've answered our questions, and we appreciate you being here tonight because the recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the internal audit as presented. Is somebody, Danielle will make that motion. Is there a second? Denise will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Angela, and please tell your team thank you for the many months' work that they put into this.
Thank you very much.
Our next agenda item is the approval of transportation routes. That brings Travis Shaw to the podium. Good evening, Travis.
Good evening. We've had some very exciting agenda items tonight.
We have.
But I would say that 25 pages of bus route information is going to trump all of those.
It might.
But in all seriousness, under Missouri law, it is required that we present to our board by the end of, we present to our board all of our bus routes and that we seek approval by the end of October. We are currently using 102 buses to transport nearly 9,200 students daily, and then 29 of those buses are also used during midday routes. So this is initial routes for the year. As a reminder, in June, I will come back to you again to seek approval, final approval of all of our routes. It will include also our July summer school, our full final routes, as well as our early childhood special ed routes that go along with that. So this is just the initial presentation. This is first review. You'll vote next meeting, but if there's any questions, I can answer it this time. I'd be happy to.
Okay. Any questions for Travis?
So on the, just because I've not looked at this, so the line that says SCH count, is that school count? Is that the number of schools or the number of students? Because there's a lot of high numbers and then very low numbers. I'm assuming it's a number of students?
Correct.
So the buses that have one student, can I assume that's special ed, special bus?
Right, and that wouldn't be, my understanding, it's not just one student per that bus, which is why there's 25 pages of the routes, because there's a lot of detail to all of the individual routes to make up that report.
So that's like one student for that segment of the route?
Could be, correct, yes.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
I don't have a question other than just a comment to share with the transportation team who were all hands on deck at the beginning of the school year, being pulled out to work the buses when they normally have an office job, just to make ends meet as we are short-staffed and shifting to increased transportation. So it doesn't have anything to do with the routes, per se, but it also has to do with the routes, per se, so.
That is continuing daily.
Yes. So please, please send our appreciation and gratitude for doing things that they, they're trying to keep our kids getting to school safely, and so we appreciate that.
I'll make sure to pass that on.
Okay.
We are not voting on this tonight. Travis was just presenting it, and we'll vote on this at our next meeting. I believe Travis will stay up here because our next agenda item is our bond project updates and actions.
So lengthy list tonight. You'll see it totals $298,011.3. You can't help but notice that $256,159 is from Jared Middle School. To put that into perspective, up to this point, we've had about $20,000 in change orders for Jared. That project has been under construction now for 10 months. So we've been working all of these things for several months behind the scenes to get to, to finalize these particular change order requests and make up this entire change order. We do budget approximately 3% for change orders within a project. For Jared, that equals about $960,000. And so when you look at this as being 10 months into a project, and we're only going to be at it after this meeting at about $276,000, we're well within where we need to be. This doesn't cause concern at all to me, but I wanted to put that into perspective because it is a lot for one school at one time. That's why, because there's been a lot of work with our contractors, subcontractors, architects, to get to this point. You'll see some credits, as well as multiple items on individual change orders that were architectural submittals. A lot of those are, again, working through city codes and drawings and changes that they make and interpret. Uh, but the other thing that doesn't really cause a lot of concern is that there's about 3.3 million in that contingency fund, uh, beyond what I put into our budgets. And so, uh, still in very good shape. The financials are in great condition, but I just wanted to give that explanation for why that is the way it is, because it's not a normal presentation.
Okay.
Any questions that I can?
Any questions for Travis at this time? Where, we vote on this tonight to keep the projects moving forward?
So the work is already done?
No.
Oh, no, okay. Your work is done.
These are not ratification. These are for approval, but we've been working to get a lot of these things in place so that we don't delay the work.
Okay.
Part of that was because we spent, in the first probably five months of construction, we had 50-plus weather days. Uh, we started in December, had a ridiculously wet spring, and so, um, we began with a lot of mud and treading through things, and so it allowed us to work these things to where when it came to that point in construction, we could move.
We're ready to get it going.
Yeah.
Right.
It's really moving now.
Yeah.
If you haven't been by Jared, it's really moving fast.
Yeah. It is. Can't wait to see the drone video.
Yeah.
We look forward to that. So I'll read the recommended action, is that the board approved the change orders and agreements as presented? Is somebody willing to make that motion? Denise will make the motion? Is there a second? Danielle will second that? Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is our superintendent's update.
Thank you. We're pleased that SPS has broken our graduation record for the second consecutive year.
Yes.
With 1,830 graduates for 2021. Enrollment is also up by 500 students as of the official count day last Wednesday. So we're celebrating, um, increased enrollment. Also, free food, flu vaccine clinics are underway at all SPS schools and will continue throughout October. Students need to sign consent from their parent or guardian. Also, our annual paid board campaign kicked off on October 1st. We've set a goal to raise $60,000, uh, for the United Way of the Ozarks and the Foundation for SPS. So we encourage everyone to participate. And, uh, finally, I'll start my second round of gather with Grenita and put from SPS staff. Uh, and over the next several weeks, I'll be meeting with them, uh, as I work to finalize my entry plan, uh, for presentation to the board in December.
Great, great. Guess we can celebrate the enrollment and celebrate the graduation, so that's awesome. Um, thank you, Dr. Lathan. Our next agenda item is, uh, board comments. Any board comments at this time?